It being on about 7:00 PM, we will start the Foxborough Planning Board meeting of the 22nd. And do you want to go through anything first?
My planner's report?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, why not? So it hasn't been officially announced yet, but the special town meeting is scheduled for November 15th. It's expected that the selectmen will formally schedule this meeting at their August 31st meeting, and then it's anticipated the warrant will be open March 1st. No, not March, September 1st through the 15th. So we're starting to bring about, thinking about zoning. So on your planner's report, which is in your package, we do have a list of possible items of zoning. One thing is we haven't done much major zoning in a year or two because of COVID. We didn't want to, you know, we weren't sure about attendance and whatnot, so we didn't want to do anything that required a lot of attendance and consideration. So now we are digging into a couple more in-depth items. Something that's come up due to COVID is the outdoor dining provisions. The selectmen have asked us to look at making some of the outdoor dining provisions that have been allowed, like sidewalk dining and certain, you know, use of parking lots, to find a way to see if we can make that permanent. So we're, I'm going to work with Barney over it and come up with some possible strategies. So we'll be bringing those forward to see if they meet, you know, folks' expectations on that. I don't yet know what that's going to look like, but I know Brookline has done it already.
So do you think that that will give opportunities for people who weren't in the first round as well, or no? Just continue permanently for those who haven't?
Well, I don't know. I think it'd be, you know, yeah, anybody who wants to apply. Each year it's been, you know, anyone who did it the first season had to reapply this year. So I've had two rounds, and we dropped, we lost a couple in the second round. So it's really, you know, but then if the, if folks can predict it and know it's coming, they might be willing to invest, and it's less temporary and more of an investment, so it's a little more predictable. So, but I mean, there's a lot of considerations. There's also the alcohol. We, you know, as a form of selectman, you know that's very involved, and that's a little bit more intricate thing, but we're going to tackle, you know, one thing at a time. And I think many communities and the state are of the same mindset that a lot of the things we learned through COVID related to outdoor dining and more flexible really have been beneficial. So we are going to try to, you know, work with everybody to see how to get that, something in there. And the reason we're kind of rushing it for the November town meeting is that if we wait till next May, it's kind of late for the businesses to plan for the spring. And we are hopeful that come next spring, we will be out of COVID protocols and we'll be back to quote unquote "normal."
Okay, one quick question on that?
Yeah.
Are we looking at increasing seat capacity for licenses?
Don't know. Yeah, we haven't gotten that far. I'd be interested, you know, that's one thing, you know, are we looking to, because what if still folks still want to dine inside, and do you want to add extra seats outside? Or, because in under COVID provisions, technically you're not supposed to have more than the occupancy.
But if we're going to move forward as a permanent, maybe we should look at that with a seasonal sort of allowance for the additional seating.
Flexibility, yeah. So then another one is the accessory dwelling unit apartment, the accessory apartment bylaw. You've all seen a draft of that. Bring that back and start, you know, since we love talking about housing so much, why not do it some more? So we'll revisit that. The one thing that we've had on our file, like sort of tickler list, is a site plan waiver for Uptown. As you know, sometimes they have to come in and ask for a waiver when they're really just changing from like an accounting office to, you know, Foxborough Nutrition, and technically then you have to do this site plan thing, or you have to waive it. We think that we can come up with some language where if you're changing nothing outside, or there's no site, and it's really just an internal thing, that there should be some flexibility where the building department could just do that without us having to rubber stamp some sort of waiver. The big one here, and I'm not sure we're going to take it up, we should discuss it, I'll bring something forward in the future, but is about stories. I think I might have mentioned this before, but technically, you know, in our bylaws, the way it's defined, anything with more than two and a half stories is out of compliance in the residential district. That includes basements. So most homes have a basement and two stories, maybe a little more. So we're not worried about that, like obviously no one's enforcing that, but it brings to light sort of an issue with use of stories versus height. And really, we all kind of think height is the measurement, less so than stories. So we have a proposal to, I think Barney did that one too, to bring that forward, to talk about whether we just look at height rather than messing around.
But don't they take into consideration living space? Like you just used for a basement, it's living space versus non-living space.
Not when you're talking height, though. Somehow it gets very black and white.
With my basement, it's living space, because it's finished. And I have two.
But that's calculated in the height of the building. The height of the building is determined by the grade and the non-average of the grade.
Correct, that's why height is better than, because it looks like I have three, I have three stories based on that.
Yeah, so do I.
And also it dawned on all of us, you know, like, oh. And again, no one's worried about that part of it, but it just brings to light sort of the problems that you run into when you're dealing with stories versus height. So stay tuned for that.
What did we do two years ago relating to the height? Was it trying to figure out where, how to choose what the grade was?
I think-
Well, I think it's the median.
Average grade or something like that?
Before I got here, I think there was something to do with that average median, like the ground elevation around it or something.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, I think that was right, I remember that.
Average grade, yeah.
That was Bill Casparra, maybe?
Casparra.
Yeah. So we've really tightened up the height language, and now the stories is in conflict just with the whole concept, because, you know, if, do we want to say three stories? And then, you know, everybody in the residential areas, you know, like, they're going to get spooked by that, they're going to think it's really, so it's, we have some ideas.
Are we having any problems, any questions, any issues that we'll bring this about?
Not with that, but like, again, in our, in the rest of our town, sometimes when you're looking at stories versus height, they don't, you know, I have trouble with, you don't have, you meet the height requirement, but for some reason you're triggering a story. So it's just weird, because you end up fighting over this weird measurement of story, which is really kind of arbitrary. So we'll bring more up. There's nothing decided, and it might be a little too much for the fall, but we'll see. Like, we'll bring it forward to talk to you guys about it. I know there's going to be a citizen petition for an easement across 15 to 17 Market Street, because that, the White House, I think it's the Bragg House next to Fab Fines and Judy's Floors Building there, that little white house. I know they want to do something with it. They're on septic right now, they would need sewer. They can't tie in, in front of the house, that are not, like, the sewer line, it does not allow it, so it has to come from behind. There's a sewer line in Market, so we anticipate they'll be seeking an easement to allow a sewer line to run through there before Doug King puts a beautiful parking lot in there. It would be nice to have that taken care of. And lastly, we have the street acceptance for Othelot Way and Peterson Lane. Gabby checked on that, and it will be over a year, so we anticipate they will be seeking acceptance on that. I don't know if you all read the report of this morning, but Jeff did an article about the 40B project that's been filed with the selectmen. That's an interesting project, because it is a 40B, and we all know that Foxborough is over 10%, so any 40B is discretionary in the town. This is a measure, a means to get smaller housing units on smaller lots. With the land prices the way they are, you need to be able to put more houses on a lot if you're going to build them smaller. Otherwise, you're just going to build a couple big homes, and we're going to end up with more, you know, $800,000 homes, which is great, you know, for the town, I suppose, and for many, but we do, as you know, have a document needed for housing. So this has been submitted to the selectmen, not for their approval, but seeking them to partner on this project. They're trying to file under the local initiative program, which means that the town and the developer go in together, and sort of, it indicates the town is somewhat supportive of it. It still has to go to the zoning, goes to the state for site approval, like that the site is eligible, and then once they get that from the state, it comes back to the town, and it would be reviewed as any 40B by the Board of Appeals. So the project as proposed right now consists of 40 stacked flats, which is basically a unit above and a unit below, 10 duplex cottages, and then the existing historic home on the property would be 52 units total. We did put, for folks walking, watching at home, on the planning board website, if you click on planning board on the left side, you can find current projects. We do have that going up there, so you could see a site plan. And if you did go back on, if you go onto YouTube and watch the Board of Selectmen's last meeting, you'll see the whole presentation, and I thought the architect did a really good job explaining the site, and sort of, it was the architect that did our small house presentation for our housing production plan, and I guess the developer liked what he said and ended up hiring him. So he had really great understanding of the land and view sheds and connections and, you know, all that great site stuff. 25 units, percent of these units would be, remain affordable, so that'd be 13 units would be affordable, and 39 would be market rate. The plant, so the presentation was made last Tuesday night, this past Tuesday night. They've asked that staff review it, so we're holding a project review meeting with all the staff next week. And then they're also asking the planning board to take a look at it, because the Board of Selectmen has really little experience in looking at plans and this type of thing. So we have scheduled a discussion of this project for August 12th, for our August 12th meeting, so.
So if, so if there was questions about density, number of units, stuff like that, where would that come into play in the process?
I'm not 100% sure. I think every, you know, and again, the Board of Selectmen aren't approving the project, but certainly I think, you know, if they have concerns about certain things, then they would have to bring those up. So, but obviously the final decision would be made by the applicant on what to pursue. I mean, they could always abandon the effort to seek the Board of Selectmen sign on, and they could just go traditional 40B without, so they, they could still do it without the selectmen signing on. So I don't know. I don't know if like the selectmen came back and said, we want it to, you know, fewer units. They, I don't know that that would work for them. I can't speak for them. And one thing that was interesting that Jeremy Lake, the architect, pointed out, is he asked everybody not to get caught up on the number of units, because the point there is that we've asked, through our housing production plan conversation, we made it clear that smaller units are needed. So these housing units are kind of half the size of what Foxborough is building right now. So that's why, you know, it's 52 units, but if you made, built them like most of Foxborough, it would be 26, which is still dense, but I just wanted, it was, I, it made it, illustrated to me sort of how nebulous that number of 26, 52, it's really the square footage, and you know, they're building smaller units, and that's why the number's so high. So we'll get, to look at it on August 12th. The plans are available on the website, and let me know if you have any questions. I'm kind of helping coordinate the efforts for them.
Paige, could you just clarify something you just said? If, if there was no buy-in on behalf of the town from the Board of Selectmen, how could that be pursued as a straight 40B when?
It's up to the Board of Appeals. It's, because the, because the only approval authority for a 40B is the Board of Appeals.
Well, because we're at, we're at the-
12%.
They can deny it, if they want, they can deny it.
Yeah.
So that's the difference. The town has the ability to deny it, so the Board of Appeals could deny it. So, okay, last thing, not last thing, next thing. Common traffic pattern, we, I was at the selectmen with Chris and Lance Tuesday night as well for that, and if you hadn't heard, the vote was to remove the parallel parking, go back to angled parking, but keep three feet that we didn't have before, so there'll now be a walkway around the outside of the fence, and then you'll still have nine feet to back up without going into the travel lane, and, but we're going to be pursuing the permanent traffic split down at South Street and Central, and we're getting ready to look at mechanic and casette as well with similar treatment.
So they, so they didn't feel that the angled parking still was a problem in terms of people backing out into the common? They thought that was, they thought that, that the, that was superior in some fashion than the parallel, because people weren't utilizing the parallel parking as much?
No, we all did not think it was superior at all. We acknowledge that people hated it, and it works. You know, both work. It might be a little too, the parallel did a great job slowing things down, and it did work, but people really didn't like it.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, we, we don't want to be, you know, if you're taking surveys and you're asking people, and after six weeks of trying it, they still don't really embrace it, you know, we don't want to do it for the sake of doing it. So we went back to, we, we actually think the other way work, the, the parallel parking works and is somewhat superior, but it wasn't enough of a, it's not a safety issue per se, and we were able to get, to accomplish the pedestrian, you know, thing that Gordon wanted really badly, so we're trying to see if this compromise works. And like, we talked about afterwards, if, you know, right now it's hard, because there's not a lot going on uptown. So if in three years, there's so much hustle and bustle, and we feel that traffic's moving too fast or whatever, we, at least we know that this way works, and we could go through the mechanisms to change it if needed then. But for now, the angled has been working. We were just trying it really, because folks expressed the need, desire to be able to walk around the outside, and they didn't like having to go to behind their cars to walk to the common. So we find, kind of feel like we've accomplished both, by having, you know, a little pedestrian access while also keeping the angle that so many people are more comfortable with. So the parallel parking on the Fab Fine Judy side will totally go away. It will just be the angled parking on the common side. But it's not going to happen overnight. Chris wants to make sure he can do a good treatment on the old striping, because right now it's a little messy. So he wants to make sure that's clean and get the materials and everything, so he's hoping before schools in session, he'll have that permanently, permanent island taken care of down at South and put everything back. We got the site plan for 15 to 17 Market Street. That's going to be the parking lot, the public parking lot, once Doug King's done with construction. So we have that planned, I believe Gabby says it's going on August 12th. And then we have two meetings coming up, August 12th, where we have Orchard Place and 15 to 17 Market Street parking lot, and then we have September 9th, and that's a 31 Water Street, and then another possible two-lot subdivision. So we have two of those between, well, so four, three out of our four projects coming up are seeking the waivers of construction standards to get two lots, so there's that. And then lastly, a couple people have asked about some of our outstanding issues, issues with Forenet Road. It's still not done. I mean, Gabby's been trying to, we're trying to get them in, what needs to happen next is they need to come in front of the planning board, because they're asking for some changes to the site plan. So unless they get approval, they can't get their occupancy permit, even though they're in the building. Don't get me going, um, so.
Who's the enforcing authority?
Why, how is it, now that they've done all the construction, everything, they want to come back and revise their site plan?
And why are they in the building without an occupancy permit?
Mm-hmm. Yes, apparently there's a ton of ledge behind the building. They were supposed to build a whole row of arborvitaries to the, you know, behind them, and I guess there's, even Norm says it's a solid ledge, and so you can't really put it where it is, and then you'd have to be removing a bunch of trees to put it up, so it's maybe a reasonable request. I don't know, I don't have much good to say about it, so.
I don't think that the, the changes are unreasonable.
Okay.
But they do have some changes, and they do need to be acknowledged by the board and, and voted on that. So we're trying to get them to, to finish the plans and then come in. If worse comes to worse, we can, you know, talk about pulling the bond.
Yeah, how much do we have?
Who's the enforcing authority on that occupancy?
I think it's Paige.
Is that, is he addressing that?
He is, he is. I mean, he has been trying to address that. There's been some issues, but yeah.
Where are we at with being compliant at this point? Other than-
Pretty close. And, and to, so that folks understand, like, Barry is well, the building commissioner's well aware of it, and he did go, like, all the, it was kind of a snafu in how it was filed, and, you know, I don't think the developer knew that he wasn't under a building permit. I don't think the building department realized he wasn't under, so it was just like this online permitting thing, and so some inspections did occur, like all the fire and life safety and all those, like, they would not be in there if the life safety things. I, you know, everybody knows that I'm not a fan of this, because I just don't think it's a good idea, and I wonder how they even have insurance if you don't have an occupancy permit, but again, that's not our problem. There's nothing, we can't, we can't fix this. So for right now, I don't know what's going on, but I don't like it. And then 45 Fairway Lane, another one of our little lot subdivision ones. That one, if you recall, was the Long Road, they had to build the arborvitaries, they want to put in a tennis court, blah, 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 conservation commission. Well, apparently, the builder went in and poured the 12-foot foundation and used the driveway as the offset and not the street layout, and doesn't understand why the street matters. So he has to deal with that, and we're like, there's just nothing, the only thing that can be done is to move the foundation. There is no flexibility on the road, you have to do it, it's a variance, you're not going to get it, so.
So did he respond to the building inspector's letter?
No, I don't know, I haven't heard lately, so that's just still pending, but FYI.
It's the builder.
Linehan?
Linehan.
Jim Linehan?
That's right, that's right.
Yeah. So, I mean, I don't think he knew, you know, I mean, it was probably one of those impulsive things, like, you, you know, I don't know, you just, you didn't get a survey or something.
I was going to say, he didn't have Billy go down and stake it out.
You know, something went wrong, and I mean, he's, you know, he spent, I'm sure a lot of money. I feel bad on a level, but again, it's frustrating with these two-lot subdivisions, because all this good everybody, you guys are trying to do, you know, it ends up, like, the homeowners don't realize that this is a road, not a driveway, and next thing you know, we, and it's just a constant battle, so that's a little bit of a frustration where, it's like now you got, we have to be the bad guys, we're sitting there telling these people over and over, no, you can't get a variance, you can't do this, you know, no, you can't, there's no way around this, so.
That's just due diligence, I'm sorry.
It is.
I agree, Jeff.
And, and then lastly, I believe Barry indicated this week that the 227 Cacassett Street issue is finally done.
Finally closed.
So, that was oil.
Oh, it looks, I went by the-
It looks normal.
Yeah, it does.
Anthony did a great job.
He did.
All done, many times.
That's all we got.
And it did go down Maple and the fence around the solar array, solar panel, looks really good.
Oh, does?
It does.
He did a nice job finishing that.
I keep meaning to go look at it, I keep forgetting.
Looks good.
I've gone, I went by it twice, because it was partially up, and I was like, are they going to finish this? And two days later, it was done, so.
Good.
Looks good.
I was driving somewhere, I don't even know where I was, and I saw a sign for Isaacson Solar for the first time. I was like, oh, I know, where Hammonds and where-
In my neighborhood, we had it.
Oh, really? Okay.
Any other acting submissions? Okay. Minutes?
That felt long ago.
I make a motion-
Did John approve them?
Well, he doesn't come to meetings, so he can't really do the meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for April 8th and May 27th of 2021.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye. We do need to also think about getting another associate.
Okay, we should, you're right. Um, sure. Well, we already, are we going to have a further discussion?
Nope, all done.
All done, okay.
I just did that for transparency.
Okay. So it being sometime past 7:15 PM, we have a public hearing site plan approval modification, Route 140 Connector from NPS LLC.
We came unmasked.
Came unmasked, yes you did.
No, no, in-mask. There's a lot of us. Let's do it, everyone. So welcome.
We're happy to be back.
I have with me tonight Dan Cransford, the Kraft Group, I have Peter Tam from Gulston Stores, Matt Pekarsky with the Kraft Group, Jeffrey Dirk from Vanessa Associates, and Beth Wheeling from the Kraft Group, and Peter has a special guest as well.
Rajinder, one of our star summer associates is back there.
Wonderful.
And we have Al Belestra, our Director of Parking over at Gillette Stadium as well.
Okay.
I thought before we got into the Route 140 piece, if it's all right with the Chair and the Board, I'd just kind of give you a big overview, because it's been a long time since we've been in front of the Board on kind of some happenings at Patriot Place and at the stadium, if you have five minutes to spare.
Sure.
You can just say no, and we can jump in.
No, no, no.
Just, so Quarter Point, which we've been in front of the Board for before, often, it's active in its marketing, I'll just say that. I know Paige and Bill Keegan participated in a, in a national publication that I think read well and was very well received. Our Freedom Wind Tunnel, the skydiving experience, after nine years of working on that, he is finally in the ground, the foundations are going, and we look to have steel erection to start next month. Some little things, Walpole Outdoors has relocated their corporate headquarters up to Patriot Place, so that, that was a nice plus for us. And there's a couple of other opportunities rolling around out there that hopefully we'll get in front of the Board and be able to announce and discuss in the very near future. As far as stadium-related things, our South End Zone project is nearing completion. It will entail pretty much the entire end of the, the south end of the stadium will be reconfigured, the concessions, the retail all, is getting a new facelift, a big new beer hall, a new concept in ordering where it's primarily going to be kiosk-related ordering. The video board that is in place, I is, A is a higher resolution, and B, it's roughly twice as large as the previous board in the South End Zone. So, well, we got to unveil that for a revs game, and it was very well received, so was happy to see that. We are also working on a club expansion on both the east and the west club. That includes an outdoor terrace, really a new dining experience. It'll be kind of our first sit-down dining experience in-game, so we're looking forward to opening that up and see how that, see how that reacts. And then we're upgrading the finishes as well throughout the entire north end of the clubs. And then there's a couple of things that we will, as excited as we are to be back in front of the Board to be here in the coming months. Our building P, which is the small building on the northeast corner, next to our E1 entrance, it's the fabric building that was put up as the temporary pro shop back when Patriot Place started, and has been there ever since. We're going to take that down and look to replace that with a three, maybe a four-story office tower. The ground floor will be primarily dedicated to football, and then the second, third, and fourth floor will look to be office expansion space. So again, that's, we're just starting to move through that process, and we'll get in front of the Board when we have a little more detail laid out. And then there's a handful of parking lot expansions, and we've talked off and on with some of the Board members about this, but, and again, we're in the midst of putting a package together where some of our parking lots will, will look to expand the capacities there, so that we have the ability to, again, this will be our, our common thread to help better the fan experience, so.
One, just one other question for you, before you get into the presentation, which is, where do you stand with the final finishing on the, the new hospital building?
Beth? Beth is our resident building K expert. Sorry.
Tell me to put you on the spot, Beth, just wanted to, where were you all at?
Answer the questions. Your final finishes meeting, I think actually we're, we're finished with the building except for the fit-out on the Dana Farber, which is the second floor. They're hoping to start that fit-out again as soon as, I believe, August, so that'll be starting up shortly.
I think it's about a year for the fit-out.
Year for that, so they'll be able to do treatments then?
Yes.
But otherwise, everything else is according to what we were planning to do.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so the main event, Route 140 Connector, as we like to call it, it is a private drive that, that we were in front of this Board in 2014. We did get two separate approvals for it. Right now, it is primarily used, or it is used, for employee access and egress on game days and event days only. And so that's why we're here. As I spoke to earlier, it's the game day experience. We, we continue to try to make it better. If we can by leaps and bounds, great, and if we can't, we'll take little bites at the apple. And again, I don't think, with some of those constraints we've talked about with this Board previously, we're not going to solve everything all at once, but we would like to just make things better a little bit at a time. So this, this is primarily for Foxborough's season ticket member holders and club patrons. I'm going to let Matt walk through the details, but there, there is a couple of things I would like to just point out. We believe this is a, is a very underutilized asset, and again, Jeffrey and Matt can speak to that. We only intend to use this on the out, so people would come in and they would park as We only intend to use this on the out, so people would come in and they would park as they would normally park, and our ideas and our concept here is only for exiting the stadium. And then the third point, and I think this is an important point as well, is that there's no additional traffic. We're not creating any new passes or any of that, so it's just the same traffic, it's just a redirection of the traffic. And again, our belief is that this redirection will keep traffic moving, keep people in a better state of mind, and have a better fan experience. Seems to us to be a little bit straightforward and simple, we hope you agree, but again, it's a solution that doesn't solve everything, but it's a step in the right direction. So with that, Matt, if you can take control and walk the Board through our ideas, it would be appreciated.
Certainly. For the record, Matt Pekarski with Director of Construction and Development with The Craft Group. I'm gonna walk you through what we're proposing here tonight for our operation on game day. As Dan alluded to, we're here in 2014 seeking the approval to construct this roadway as well as what we refer to as Employee Lot B down behind Bass Pro, and that was constructed in 2015. In the years that followed, as we were operating that parking lot and using the connector driveway down to Route 140, it became very apparent, starting in the first year, to be honest with you, that there's a period of time immediately following, really any event, but in this case, we're focusing on football games, where there just is not, the road is underutilized. Basically, you know, you look at Route 1, and you have five lanes of congested traffic heading southbound by the Old Moms', and then here's this driveway sitting there with, you know, quite honestly, very few if any cars on it for at least that first hour or so after a game. So, with that as background and understanding how that area operates and knowing how our employees tend to flow both in and out of the building, we really looked at it as another underutilized asset that we'd like to try to tap into for the sake of getting cars off of the property post-event in a more efficient manner, is really what it boils down to. The reason why the road is underutilized really has to do with a couple of factors, but it's primarily because of the way our employees are checked out at the end of their shift, you know, during a game. So typically, the first big slug of employees will come out during the third quarter or at the end of the third quarter, when typically when alcohol shutdown starts, the beer hawkers and the hawkers in general, they're a big slug of the employees. They'll typically be out of the building and on their way to their car prior to the end of the game. Anybody who hasn't checked out by that point typically does not leave until well after, you know, an hour, hour and a half after the game. That's your security, your food and beverage, people who are staying to clean up after the game and stuff like that. So it's really that window of period that we're talking about here that we wanna try to tap in and utilize this roadway system to get some of our patrons out in there. The map that I have up here on the screen, I apologize, it's a little bit light on there, so it's kinda hard to see, but hopefully everyone can see it okay. What we're referring to is the, as the path of travel is shown on here is this yellow line. But just by way of reference, this is the Empower Fieldhouse, the South Retail Stores kind of all run along this stretch here, and Bass Pro Shops is right here. This is Employee Lot B through here, and this is, Guardian Storage is right here, the Old Moms', and then this is the actual driveway connector that heads down to Route 140 to the intersection with 140. The user groups that we're looking to have access to this road is a combination of a hand, it's, first of all, it's people who already have access to Putnam Parkway, so it's people that would already be looking to go out onto the local streets. And it's a combination of West Club Premium, Club and Suite folks with Putnam Parkway access, and Foxborough residents with Putnam Parkway access. By reference, you know, this is Lot 22 over here next to the stadium, see if I can pan over here a little bit, that's Lot 22, and Lot 10, those are our two premium parking lots, directly opposite that is Lot 12, which is where the Foxborough residents park. And generally speaking, the majority of those cars right now that have Putnam access come down the Ring Road around what we could refer to as Gate House 2, right next to the Empower Fieldhouse, and then travel down this orange path basically towards Putnam Parkway, this dashed orange line. What we're proposing is to basically take a handful of that traffic and place it on the pathway behind the South Retail buildings, behind Bass Pro Shop, and then route them down through Employee Lot B, all the way out to Connector Road down to Route 140. Not only does it improve the game day experience for the people that are there, in the case of, you know, a lot of the folks, the distance may actually be a little bit further than they would otherwise travel, but they're moving and they're sitting in, as opposed to sitting in traffic. And the main reason for that is because it's just a lot of congestion that currently goes out Putnam Parkway. So from the time that this split happens on the Ring Road right here by Gate House 2, you know, it can take them upwards of 10, 15 minutes to get down this stretch of traffic towards Putnam Parkway, because we have all of Lot 6 and some other traffic that's egressing out there as well at the end of a game. In addition to that fan experience, it's also from a public safety standpoint, and this is one of the things that really sparked a lot of this discussion early on, was we're trying to eliminate the amount of traffic that's on this Ring Road. As you know, when you look at the site as a whole, you know, it's a little bit easier now on, because of Patriot Place, to get from the east to the west, but it's still, as I'm sure the chiefs will back me up on, it can be difficult to get from one side of the stadium to the other, and there's really only two means of doing it. It's either coming along the front of the retail stores here, or it's using the Ring Road in the back, because the stadium is a natural barrier between the east and the west side. So, the ability of emergency vehicles to pass through the Ring Road in this kind of one-hour period afterwards is hampered oftentimes by the amount of traffic that's on the Ring Road, and in particular by the Empower Fieldhouse with a roadway next down to essentially a two-lane road with, you know, can be congested on either side. So this is really an attempt to, one, improve experience of the fans coming, but then, two, also try to reduce the amount of traffic on the Ring Road itself and free up the congestion through there. As Dan alluded to, it's not a, there are no new cars, it's existing pass holders, we're just simply redirecting them into a different path. In the case of the residents, it's pretty obvious, obviously, they'll be, you know, they're staying within Foxborough, so typically they'd come down to the end of this Connector Road and take a left to head back into Foxborough. In the case of a club or suite member, that would be, that would be provided with this pass, we'd be looking to try to give them a pass, we'd be looking to try to target the group of people who are either south of here, looking to go west of here. It's not, it's not an exact science, because people hand off tickets and things of that nature, but that's gonna be the target group that we're gonna go after first if, should we be allowed to egress traffic this way.
So, just let me interrupt for one second, Matt. So, it would be stadium-directed as opposed to driver-directed. Driver wouldn't say, "Well, today I'll go this way," or, you know, "And the next time I'll go down the way I used to go at Putnam."
Correct. It will be by game, you'll have to have a specific pass to go out that way, but in one of our previous, in one of our previous forum discussions that we had with the Foxborough residents to bring this up, that question was asked, "Can I try it, and if I don't like it, can I switch back?" And the answer is yes. So people will have the flexibility to go back and forth, and I should probably back up a step. As it relates to the people, this is all voluntary, right? We're not looking to force everybody to go out this way. This is people who want to choose to participate in this, and in really in the 21, the 2021 season, we're kinda looking at it more as a pilot program, because, you know, we wanna walk before we run, we wanna test this out and make sure it works. But I think from a Foxborough resident and certainly from a West Club Premium standpoint, if someone does it once and they don't like it, then certainly we'll work with them to swap their passes out and then allow them the flexibility. But we really do see this as an added value. Again, for the residents, we, you know, the feedback we heard was, some want to stay on Putnam because they live over on that side of town, it's just easier for them, makes perfect sense. Others want to go this way because, you know, they recognize that just getting out of the parking lot onto the Ring Road is a challenge, and then once you're there, you have to wait in the traffic the whole way. But it will have a ripple effect, too. So in addition to these two user groups that are, you know, not only benefiting from a better experience getting out, we're also reducing the amount of traffic that's just going out Putnam Parkway by whatever goes out this way. So, the effect on North Street, Payson, Chestnut, and Mechanic should be felt as well, because again, we're not increasing those cars, it's actually a decrease, it's a redistribution of the same traffic. Yes?
Is there a reason, have you, did you consider it to get folks in to the stadium? Or is there only-
We've thought about it, it's a little more challenging. So, on the in, first of all, on the in, generally speaking, it's the one thing we don't hear a lot of feedback on. Everybody wants to get out at the same time, but, and that's really because the exit really occurs in between an hour, hour and a half, two hours, hopefully less than two hours. But typically, that 90-minute window after an event is the critical time when 60,000-plus people are trying to leave, whereas the in typically happens over a four- or five-hour window. And that learned behavior over time, some arrive early, some arrive right before, because they don't tailgate, as opposed to those that want to. So the distribution of traffic is spread out. So there really isn't a big issue really getting people here, particularly on the local streets, then as opposed to everyone trying to leave at the same time.
Makes sense, thank you.
Matt, what do you feel the anticipated additional traffic will be? How many cars?
Addition, in what-
Well, not additional, how many cars will be traveling out this Ring Road?
So, we're gonna, Jeff is gonna talk about that a little bit from a traffic capacity standpoint. I'll jump ahead a little bit and kinda talk about that briefly. From a, it's limited to a certain degree, because we're really only focusing on this one-hour window. So, we really feel that the number that we modeled and we think is the ideal number is about 750 vehicles. However, we don't, in year one, as part of this pilot program, we don't expect it to really exceed more than probably 300 or so. Again, because we wanna walk before we run. Jeff can go through this in more detail, but I'll take his thunder away, but the analysis shows that there's plenty of capacity within the local street network to accommodate those up to 750. But there's also just a practical standpoint that we only have this one-hour window of time, right? So Al and his team will be monitoring the traffic down there, and the last thing we wanna have is us putting traffic down there while the, when the next wave of employees start to come out, because then it's a bad experience for everybody-
Right.
-and it really doesn't help anybody. So we don't wanna put anybody out there longer, and there could be circumstances, quite frankly, where if it's a blowout and people are leaving early, which hopefully we'll have a lot of this year, that people are coming out and if there's no need to open it, it's not like they're gonna rush to open it. We're gonna wait until we see a backup on here, and we'll try to keep people going down Putnam. It's really more of a relief valve for once the congestion backs up from Putnam Parkway up to Gate House 2. So that's an overview of the, I got a little off-topic there, but that's all right, I got a, that's an overview of the general layout. We have some additional slides, let's see if I can get down to the next ones here. There's a couple of areas of concern in particular behind Bass Pro, and we met with Bass Pro, the managers of Bass Pro, and they're fully on board and support this proposal, but this is probably the one area that has, I'll call it the most public safety interface concern, if you will, just with traffic going through there. So this roadway, it's a little bit hard to see into the picture here, but the yellow line would be the path, the travel of the vehicles going through here. And that roadway behind Bass Pro is, I believe it's 18, 18 or 20 feet wide, and it's been used on a regular basis for professional shuttle bus drivers as it relates to our employee operations since 2015. So having traffic traverse behind Bass Pro over the course of an event is nothing new for them, and I think that's part of the reason why they were comfortable with this. But obviously, in this scenario, we're bringing vehicles, we're bringing the public now through this area, so we paid special attention to this area to make sure that we put the proper safety measures in. So, in addition to, you know, checkpoints, I call them checkpoints, it'll be a combination of staff and law enforcement at these different locations. This is at the bottom of what we call, by the wastewater treatment plant, this purple dot here, and then this purple dot over here. Those are current checkpoints that we have right now, albeit not necessarily police, but they would be in this, under this operation. We control the access through here, because this is essentially a one, it's a one-lane road, so we can't have a scenario where two shuttle buses are coming at each other. So we actively manage that and have all the time with great success. The idea here is that we'll have basically platoons of traffic coming through post-event along this yellow line, they'll traverse through here, and on either side of this path of travel, we're gonna line it with bike fence. And the main reason for that is because inevitably, despite our wishes of not having people walk back here, people walk back there. So, and it's a couple-fold, I wanna create a sense of driver confidence going through there, but I also wanna keep it kinda tight and narrow so that people don't go too fast. You know, professional drivers going through is one thing, but when you have fans coming post-event, we're certainly mindful of that. So by putting the bike fence on either side, it will really help to create a safer environment. And what we're gonna add into this area right now, this is the egress from the Bass Pro Shops out to the bog, and we'll have that as an actively managed spot. So, for a 1 o'clock game, you know, we could be in a scenario where it's 4 to 5 o'clock, Bass Pro's still open, the public could be going out there, so we're gonna be mindful of that and have that as an active crossing right there to keep it safe. But generally speaking, it will be, you know, this progression of traffic coming through here. We'll put light towers out there as needed as the season goes on and, or for night games, as the case may be. The nice thing is for, other than a 1 o'clock game, Bass Pro's typically closed by the time we get to post-event. So that's, there's really, there really isn't a lot of traffic out there. So we've taken that into account in the overall operation as well.
This is gonna assist you in getting people off the property?
Correct.
Does that move the problem further down on Chestnut, Main, and North?
No, I don't think, if anything, it's gonna improve the conditions along Chestnut and Mechanic and Payson and North, because we'd be taking traffic out of that general area. And I think we, the traffic, and Jeff can speak more to this, but the traffic that we'll be introducing onto 140 is basically going onto a road that the numbers bear out now that it's, and our observations bear out that it's essentially an underutilized road. And again, from a traffic standpoint, the thing to keep in mind, particularly with the, from the resident side, is the resident traffic, by the time they get, if they come down 140 to get to the, I'll call it the Dunkin' Donuts intersection area there, or if they came out Putnam to get to that area, that's the only difference in path of travel. From the time that they get to Dunkin' Donuts and go down 140 to the center of town, it wouldn't matter which way they came out, they're doing that same path.
So it's getting there quicker.
Yeah, they're gonna get there quicker. They're gonna get there quicker, but as we sit here, I'm not saying that we're gonna shave, you know, 15 minutes off their egress time. This is gonna be more of a keeping people moving-
Exactly.
-feeling, that you're making progress, you're, you'll get there a little bit quicker, but not significantly much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Beth, how do I click over to this now? I think I just, oh, I have it, there we go. So we took the liberty of putting together a quick little drone video that will show you the path of travel. Most of you have probably been back here, I don't know how many have been behind Bass Pro.
You're not sharing.
Oh, not sharing, oh, sorry. Stop sharing.
I got you guys up there.
There we go, yeah, 14 of you.
Wow, that's, that's kinda-
Matt's gone to space.
Like it. Here we go.
There we go.
I can't get the play button, though. There we go.
When we previewed this, there was music.
Don't start singing.
This is accelerated just for the, in the interest of time, but in, generally speaking, you can see the area behind here, I'll pause it as we go, but this is just behind South Retail. This area in the back here would actually be on game day. You know, you'll have a handful of retail employees that are parked back here, but again, the employees are, the retail employees are in a shift cycle that tends to not overlap. The retail employees want their employees while we're egressing, they wanna let their employees go after the traffic is gone. So these employees out here, their point being is it's parked cars along here, so there's not a lot of friction, as I would call it, and it makes her, you know, basically the cars coming through here would be the only vehicles traveling down, and then they'll progress down towards the, towards the wastewater treatment plant here. As we're coming down to the wastewater treatment plant right here, this is that area I was talking about, the first checkpoint, so this is where we'll actively manage, and we'll be blocking, you know, right now, cars cannot go up and down here, and we'll continue with that model, and then the cars will progress behind Bass Pro, you'll see here. You can kinda see the white lines, we've had those in there for years anyways, but that will kinda mimic the bike fence setup, if you will. And here's that area I was talking about where we'll line each side of this path through here, which is a paved surface. So on the right-hand side will be a minimum four-foot-wide path for pedestrians to walk along. We'll have security and stuff out there as well to help assist with that. And then this is the existing crossing right here that we'll actively cross, anybody who wishes to get out towards the bog area.
How wide is that, Matt, right now?
I wanna say the inside edge from here, this is like a stone drainage swell along here, I believe it's 18 feet from the edge to edge.
So is the intent to diminish that width to create a pedestrian walkway, or you're gonna push out?
Diminish the width, which goes to my driver confidence. I want, I don't want it to make it too wide, because I don't want people to think that they can drive through there too quick. And then it comes around, this is, I don't know what happened.
And I know that you're gonna, you can't not let folks walk back there, but they're, you're gonna do the best you can to deter people walking back there?
Yeah, so the people who typically walk back there is, on a nice day, a 1 o'clock game, we will get employees who just don't wanna take the shuttle bus, and they just wanna walk out to their car, particularly if they're here in Lot B, because it's not too bad of a walk. Against, you know, against our best efforts to stop it, we do get a lot of off-site satellite parking that cut through the trees right here, so there are some fans that will walk through, because it's easier to walk through there than to come up Route 1, and they've just over time have realized this is a quicker path of travel. So that's why we're really just being proactive and putting the bike fence out there to try to accommodate as best we can.
But the bike fence won't stop the car, right?
No, it wouldn't. But I'd also say it's no different than no protection when they're walking through the parking lot here, and cars are egressing through there as well.
I would agree.
So this is coming into the Lot B area here, it's kind of a good overview of it. They'll traverse down here, we kinda have these kinda two tight turns, hairpin turns here, if you will, to come through, through Lot B. And then on game day, you can picture like this is just lined with cars, right? There's, you know, it's all employee vehicles heading right through here. And this is coming down around to the Old Moms' parking lot here, heading out towards Route 1, this gate is closed on post-event, and then they turn onto what we've been calling the Route 140 Connector driveway, heading down towards Route 1, I'm sorry, Route 140, running parallel to Route 1. And then once they get to 140 down here, you know, this is the decision point to go left or right, based on the direction that they're choosing to go. This is already, has been an actively managed location. Foxborough Police, you know, have a detail here that they manage the traffic, as well as at Lot A, which is just up, you know, a couple hundred feet up to the north on 140 here as well.
So do you think you'll see police officers stopping traffic on 140 to let a flow go through and then opening it back up?
They do, yes, they do, they do that now. So when we talk about that 750 number, too, that's inclusive of, there are some employees that are gonna be leaving during this time, right? It's not like every, nobody leaves. So, and we have the data- time, right? It's not like every, nobody leaves. So, and we have the data on that, that Jeff has factored into his analysis that shows, we have it down by the minute, to be honest with you, as the cars, you know, egress down there. So it's a combination of the handful of employees that are leaving, as well as some of the premium folks that would be going out there. And it would just effectively increase the amount of traffic going there in this period of time for that detail to manage that's there.
Yeah.
So with that, I think I'm gonna, I think I covered everything I need to cover. I'm going to hand it over to Jeff now, and he can walk you through the, I'll pull up your screens here, Jeff, so you can-
Thanks, Matt. I don't have any fancy videos. Mine are going to be still shot, so-
Somewhere I can get them up.
As long as you don't sing, we're good.
That's okay. Yeah, I promise not to do that. So I think just as Matt's pulling up, a lot of the questions that you've asked were kind of the things that we went through as a part of the traffic analysis, because there's a finite capacity, obviously, to what we can process with the roadway. And I think some of your questions about some of the local roadways and such, you know, that was a part of our analysis, is that there is a certain throughput that we're able to handle here. And as, as Matt had mentioned, as we looked at the employee exiting volumes during that time period, it's really, as we looked at a exit from a game day, somewhere between 415 and 515 is kind of that peak exiting flow from the Route 140 connector. And it's somewhere around 250 employee vehicles that are leaving during that one-hour period. So as Matt was mentioning, the 750 number, that's a combined of about 1,000 vehicles exiting that roadway over the one-hour period post-game. And so that's really the, kind of the finite theoretical capacity of the roadway. So that's kind of, Matt arrived at that number and looking at kind of the reality of how many people or patrons probably could get assigned or would use that access. From our standpoint and look at the capacity, that's really you getting close to, you can't handle any more traffic than that. And it gets to the point of the detail officer stopping traffic on 140. And from our perspective, in looking at the traffic operations, it's, you know, it's, it's the amount of time that you wait, but more than that, it's on the side streets, it's the queuing. And that's really the issue. So the constraints in terms of looking at operations is the ramp, the Main Street ramp to Route 1. You can only store so many vehicles before that gets out to Route 1, and then Route 1 breaks down. And then looking at the 115, the Turner Road connection, same thing there. There's a finite queue capacity that you can store in that road. So as soon as you get beyond that 1,000-vehicle type exiting, the queues start to get to a point where it starts to interfere with the traffic flow on those roadways. So what Matt's showing on the slide here, just by way of looking at the letters, the colors on here, you know, green's good, yellow's at a point where it's acceptable, but we're at a point where it's going to start to teeter into a point where it's not acceptable. And red is not acceptable. So that's what you see. This is existing conditions in terms of operations. And as you look at the places where Matt is showing the Ps and the Ss, the Ps are where there's police detail officer control. The Ss are where the two signals are as you get down to the Chestnut Street, North Street intersection. So what you see in looking at the colors there, the yellow color that you see, that's the Turner Road, the 115 intersection. So you can see acceptable, but teetering before we add any additional traffic. The Main Street ramp has always been a problem. And that backup that happens towards the Dunkin' Donuts there is a very sensitive area that is sensitive to the flow of traffic along 140. Between Main Street and the Chestnut Street, North Street area, there's really no impediment to flow. So we've got capacity along that section of roadway to accommodate the additional traffic that we're speaking about as part of this project. Looks like that.
And where that, where that red is-
Yes.
That's, it's a red when they're going north.
Correct.
Versus south. It's only in one direction.
Exactly. That's exactly right. So the next slide, so if we add 1,000 vehicles or 750 coming out the exit, this is what shows, this shows what happens if we don't do anything. So if you just maintain the existing operations, same police detail officer controls at the intersections, no changes to the traffic management plan, what you see is that one yellow area teeters to a red. So now it's unacceptable condition. Main Street, of course, it's already red, so it can't get any worse. But what happens is if, unless you make changes to that intersection, now we're backing up the Dunkin' Donuts, and we're getting to the back to the Route 1 area. So we, that's really not an acceptable condition. So next slide, Matt. So as a part of the changes that we're planning with opening up the Route 140 connector, again, to that finite number or select number of pass holders to be able to use it, we'd be adding police detail officers both at Main Street as well as at Route 115. Those are necessary, not only just to maintain the flow of traffic along those roadways, but the detail officers, as you know, they can observe the flow of traffic and know, in particular on Main Street, when that queue gets too long, then they're able to hold back traffic and allow for that queue to dissipate along the ramp. The same thing happens at the Route 115 intersection. What's important as well is that each of these detail officers along there, they're in coordination or speaking to each other. So what'll happen is the detail officer, when they shut down, let's say, the Main Street intersection, stopping traffic on 140 to clear the queue off of Main Street, they'll do the same thing at the 140 connector. So they're going to hold traffic up at that, hold it on the connector. So it operates in a very efficient manner so that what they're doing is efficiently using that section of corridor, because basically between 115 and Main Street, you've got active control of all of the intersections along there by means of a police detail officer. So it's very efficient to, in terms of the flow of traffic. And then as Matt had mentioned, once you get south of Main Street, there's plenty of capacity along the Route 140 corridor. And then as we look, as you get to the North Street, Chestnut Street area, basically the traffic volumes from that point, either easterly or southerly, are the same as what you have today. So there's really no change in terms of the, of the volume of traffic. It's just how it gets to that area. But once you get beyond those points, it really doesn't change very much. And again, the intent here is really, when you look at the circulation within the parking lot, that's where we're hearing is the constraints when people are trying to exit, is they just can't get out of the parking lots. And so they spend a lot of time in the parking lots there. And what we're hearing in terms of expressing of desire is, at least keep us moving. We don't care if we're going slow. We don't want to be as jammed up in the parking lot and watching everyone else go, and we're stuck. And so what this does is it allows for freeing up some of the movement within the lot. And as everyone was saying, it may not be something where it's a travel time savings, but at least you're moving. And that, that's kind of what we heard. We want to at least, you know, be moving along with traffic.
So under existing conditions, how many, how many cars actually go down Putnam right now, at the end of a game?
Ballpark, I mean, I'm- You're in the 1,400, plus or minus, probably, probably plus side of that.
So you're trying to at least split it in half, maybe a little bit more going down the new?
Yeah, it probably, like, the whole run would be if we can get, you know, if we could get 600 people coming out this way, then that would be huge, in addition to the employees. Then that's really, really where we come up with like kind of that 750 number. That's not going to, you know, as we sit here today, I don't see that happening on year one.
No.
But it's, it would, that would be a tremendous improvement, you know?
Okay. I have a couple of questions because I have a definitive interest in what's happening there because we tailgate at the Lafayette. And Jeffrey said there's going to be a detail officer at the end of 115 now?
Correct, at 140.
Because there never has been one. There's one at the employee lot-
Yes.
And then there's one at this access road. If you've got one up there, I think it'll help traffic flow dramatically. The other is, I can't emphasize enough, that the detail officer has to be able to queue the vehicles properly.
Right.
We've seen it stop the flow of traffic on 140 to let one vehicle out. And you've got six people stopped in a 100-foot section going, "Why?" So those are my two biggest concerns. I did have conversations with Chief Grace about this weeks and weeks ago at, by this point in time. And he had made some suggestions, and maybe Chief can speak to this tonight, as well as some of the things you would discuss as far as other traffic aspects.
When Gabby sent me the email, can you write some comments about this? I figured I have to show up because there's no way I could possibly speculate what question. So one of the things you talked about was the Lafayette house. And actually, I went to, to Matt with the traffic management plan, and after game day, we're shutting that road down on both ends.
So Pine Street will?
Totally shut down. One, the road isn't designed for traffic. There's no lighting. And what we're having is, at the end of the game, everybody wants to take a right there. And what happens is it backs up Route 1. So the whole right lane of Route 1 is backed up. All of the private lots that are stuck in that lane, they don't move. So-
Right.
The Lafayette house and seasonal will be able to, their guests can leave either way.
Okay.
And that's it.
Is there a licensed lot on that road? Isn't there a licensed lot on that road?
Yes, he was just saying they'll be able to leave.
Oh, they will, I'm sorry.
Oh, in the, that third one?
Yeah.
We can kind of alleviate some of those issues as well. Because what's happening is prior to the end of the game, people are coming up 115, the ride shares are stacking that road-
Yes.
-from the Rantham side. So we're going to have someone in place that doesn't allow anybody to go up that road. We're shutting it down.
Good.
And that way, Route 1 flows. If people want to get off, they can get off after Chase Lumber on a road that's designed to handle that. So when we talk about the traffic coming up 115, we're not going to have people going Pine Street to 115 to 140 now. That's over. So I think that will substantially enhance that intersection. I will never say we won't have traffic, just I'm going to be very clear.
No, it'd be a marked improvement. It would be absolutely marked.
And when we talk about working on this traffic management plan, it's as fluid as a glass of water. I mean, if, the amount of work that we've done to increase the movement in town is, we have now adjusted how many lanes that we take on Route 1 to address the town traffic. So we take two-fold lanes now on top of 140 by Dunkin' Donuts, which is 50% of the entire northbound lane, to make sure that we keep traffic in Foxborough moving, pre-game. And it's worked great. Last year, obviously, it was.
It worked great last year. It was awesome.
But we were able to fix all the backups on Mechanic Street and Chestnut Street.
Okay.
So, I think.
Good.
So if we have a problem, we're going to deal with it.
Yeah.
You know, and we, it's, there's open communication, game day, during the event, post-event. So I don't per se have an opinion about it, but when we're taking the same amount of cars and we can dilute them, I think we will probably increase or decrease the impact on the community, or at least spread it out.
Okay.
Because, as they've said, many people come up, out the access road, but then they want to take a right. So now, that's another pinch point. So if we can decrease that number a little bit, then we're going to make Chestnut Street flow a little bit.
Good. Thank you.
I'll just add to that, to all the changes that the chief just referred to, as well as this operation, we've taken the liberty of incorporating it into our traffic management plan, which we file every year with DOT and provide a copy with, to the town. Assuming we get a favorable decision on this matter, then we'll obviously look to file that and get all that in place, so we can implement all of that this year.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Anything else in your presentation?
I think we're good.
So then I'm going to open it up to anybody in the audience who's here for a question or a comment. Just raise your hand, state your name and address for the record.
Probably make room at the table because for the folks at home-
Yeah, you'll need to, you'll need to just speak into a microphone, if you don't mind. Come forward and just state your name and address and say, ask what you like.
Hi, good evening. Tom Rossback, 15 East Menave. I've lived in the town for 14 years. I have a season ticket holder now for 30. I was able to take a tour of the access road. Hello.
Thanks, Gabby.
Al took me for a ride and my wife down there. It's unbelievable. This gentleman said it takes about 15 minutes to get from the first security point to the Putnam Parkway. That hasn't happened to me in the last three, four years. It's, it's unbelievable how long it takes. Sometimes it takes an hour just to get out of our parking lot. This would be incredible. I know there's going to be some hiccups. It's not going to, my video was nine minutes, back and forth, back to the parking lot. Even if it took 15 minutes on game day, it's going to be substantially greater than going all the way down. That's all I wanted to say.
Going out Putnam was very, very difficult. Painful, yes, painful.
It's great coming in.
Yeah. But to exit, no, it's, it's way too much choked in.
I agree.
Well, you know, it might make it a straight shot. If you unload some of that vehicle or-
Absolutely.
...volume, you might find that Putnam's not so bad.
It's like new infrastructure just showing up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you speaking.
Thank you.
May I say something?
You may, of course.
Janet Hargan, 15 East Menave. I just want to say that it's a wonderful thing. I love Foxborough. I love living here. I love talking to people and saying, "Yeah, live in Foxborough, season ticket holder." Really, yep, have the best lot. Tailgate, house to Tailgate, nine minutes we're there. And then I have to go getting out.
I know.
It's horrible. It doesn't have to be that way, and I really think you should give these guys a chance. We've got friends, we've got neighbors, I'm chit-chatting this. It's, it's a no-brainer. Let's try it. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Janet, I will say that I, I probably have had the biggest reservations of anybody on this board about this. And I've been very vocal about it because I was directly affected by it. And from what I'm hearing now, what I've heard from Chief Grace, I think this has the potential of showing definitive improvement.
It does. And it, it won't hurt to try.
No, no.
Thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions for people on the board?
Yeah.
I do, yeah. A little bit tangential, but not really. At one point, Matt, I think I should be addressing this to you. You had mentioned, a little off-topic, this is a little off-topic. You had mentioned shuttle buses using this roadway, and I assume they're coming from the other side of the Route 1 overpass from that entrance, to the, the back entrance to the employee lot. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'd like to make a request. At least you could look at it, think about it. You know, you've got on Pier Street, 140, you've got a berm up there, up to the elevation of the lot. That really is an eyesore. Of course, that's a subjective thing, but there's been virtually no maintenance there for quite some time. So if you could take a look at that, you know, in your spare time-
Considering, don't.
Yeah, that would be a nice thing. Thank you.
I'll, you brought up a good point about the shuttle buses as well, just in case there was any question, actually, I didn't mention in my presentation. But this is something that Al and I have been coordinating on quite a bit because, you know, his department manages our employee shuttle buses on game day. A lot of people don't know it, but we have upwards of 17 to 21 buses running on game day to move the employees back and forth. It's, it's a pretty, it's actually quite a logistical challenge to coordinate all of it. But they're servicing these two lots here. It's obviously Lot B and then Employee Lot A out here off of, off of 140, with obviously A being the longer run of the two. The game plan is, and I'll, I'll talk about it in the context of the overall flow, but it's really specific behind Bass Pro. We've got it set up now, and we've engineered this such that we're going to basically stage all of the buses in Lot 9. This is the lot between the practice fields and the fieldhouse. That's where the employees all walk out to, to catch the bus. So we have 17 buses sitting there with an average seat capacity of 35 or 40. I don't know the exact math off the top of my head, but it's a lot of seats. More, more employees that are leaving. So the game plan is to basically fill and send those buses. They merge in with the same exact traffic. Those buses go all the way out to either Lot A or Lot B, and then they either stay in the lot, or they come back to that checkpoint that I alluded to earlier just before Bass Pro. And we're going to then stage those buses there. So the, the perfect scenario is, we have enough capacity in bus seats at Lot 9 to have a one-way flow going out, that we never have to stop the progression of traffic going behind Bass Pro to bring them back through, because that's that one-lane road through there. So, and we're confident that we're not going to have to stop it. But if we do, we'll stop it shortly, and we'll have a platoon of, you know, nine buses that can go through, and the rest of the way, they can coexist with two-way traffic. But that, that's been thought of as well, because, you know, we don't want to degrade the employee experience at all either. I mean, they're just as important to the overall operation as well.
You're good? Cam?
Cool.
I'm good. Anything?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Hold those in favor?
Aye. It might be helpful in the wording. I make a motion to-
Approve.
Approve the site plan.
Site plan modification.
Site plan modification.
For the Route 140 connector.
For the Route 140 connector, thanks, Matt.
As submitted.
As submitted.
On this date, at this time.
On July 22nd, at-
8:10.
8:09.
I second.
Gary did.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I liked the drone. It was very helpful. It was.
Something new.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for your input.
Motion to return.